I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow and Councillor Pishanary.
Here, thank you.
And Councillor Woodrow is excused for the evening. We have three items this evening. The first one is City Council Training with Mary Bridget Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to do a annual City Council Training. Does that sound, is that loud? It's just loud to me. It's okay. We do have a PowerPoint that AJ and Neil are going to help me with. And I'm just going to put my timer on here because I know you have a couple of other items tonight. So my goal is just to talk for 20 minutes. And then if, feel free to ask questions, but I am mindful of timing. Before I get going on the next slide, I do want to do a little bit of housekeeping. So in the written materials and tonight I referenced some city administrative regulations. I did not include those in your packet. I'll send those separately. It was just kind of getting to be a tonnage thing after a while. It's so many attachments. I didn't want to include them. And I'll also be sending some additional information on the new mandatory reporter requirement. And then I do plan to train the new councillors on public official ethics and meetings and records once they're in office and that the three of us can just do it at some point. So just so you know, we'll be doing that. And then I'll also be sending you an invitation for a webinar on harassment and discrimination. Similar to the one that you took last year, it'll be through CIS and there'll be instructions there. If there's any mix up there, just let me know and we'll get that done. It's not the same training, but it's related topic. So trying to mix that up a little bit this year with the different training. I watched it a little while ago and it's pretty good. It's from an attorney at CIS who kind of goes through what people should be thinking about with discrimination and harassment. And also just wanted to say thank you to council leadership and to Councillor Rodley for helping me kind of think about this presentation today. You know, we're really looking at changing council training a little bit, trying to rework it as part of our enterprise risk management program. And think about it in a way that hopefully makes you more aware of what the resources are out there and to talk about additional topics that maybe we hadn't done previously. So this first slide just frames up the conversation in terms of why we come to the council regularly to train you on topics. So obviously we always want a high functioning council to prevent liability and to stay up to date on laws and rules and changes. So just to frame a conversation there. And then looking at the next slide. The topics we're going to talk about tonight are a little bit different than what we typically do. And they are new mandatory reporter requirement. That's for child abuse reporting. Information security, which is another way to say cybersecurity. A reminder about political activities and then workplace discrimination and harassment. And that should say retaliation instead of discrimination. Typo on our part there. Public official ethics, public meetings, public records, all still there. All still issues, but no significant changes in this last legislative session. In your packet, there are some highlights there that have been updated. But you're, you know, in a more experienced council, you've had that training before. If you have questions, you can always call us, but no significant changes here in those areas. I think one kind of thread though, in these areas, which is interesting, is thinking about all the different ways that councillors interface with the organization, whether it's staff or the community or just the city itself. It's often different than how staff does. And so I think some of these areas sort of tease that out in a way. And I think just thinking about, I would imagine you've had the experience where you get treated much differently for people in your role as a councillor, as a mayor than you do in other roles in your life. And also, you know, your leaders of the organization and policymakers, yet you're not employees, right? We still have this volunteer status. So it can feel, I think, kind of strange for you, I would imagine. And then also for staff in the community as they're trying to figure out kind of the best way to interact. So something to think about as we talk about these topics. So first topic is new. Whoa, that's a lot of text on that slide. Okay, it's not eye test. So I'll talk about this a little bit and there's more material in the written materials. So last year in the legislative session, the legislature changed the definition of a public official subject mandatory reporting to be a mandatory reporter to include elected officials. Now, it may be that you already have this responsibility and other roles in your life because there's sort of a a large group of people who already are mandatory reporters. For example, law enforcement, some clergy, some school employees. I'm a mandatory reporter as part of my role as an attorney. But that has to do with the responsibility to report to DHS if you're aware of a reasonable suspicion that a child that you've come in contact with has been abused. I want to be clear that it's just a reporting requirement. So really this is making the call. You need to be the one to make the call. You can't delegate that to someone else. Your responsibility that you hold. But from there, they'll take it from there and someone from CPS or law enforcement will further investigate to determine that.
No, but Joe's got his hand up.
Oh, okay.
Just real quickly, in regards to mandatory report. The, what if, is that information that you must personally, personally observe or report, reported to you? What type of exposure? Where was that threshold at?
That's a good question. My understanding is information that you have observed that you know. But I'll confirm and then I can follow up.
Okay, because we're, all of us are exposed to a lot of information provided by community members. And, and what to do with that is, I think is an important part of our work.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And I think certainly councillors and elected officials get lots of information from constituents, right, about information. So I'll confirm, my understanding is this information, reasonable information that you have about abuse, not something that someone's related to. There are, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, to follow up on what Joe just asked. Is it just going to be up to every councillor to decide what a reasonable, what reasonable grounds are?
Yes, that is.
I mean, so if you consider it a credible report.
That's, I think that's a good way to put it. In the training materials, there's a guide from DHS and there's also, what I'm going to send you is a link to a video, which is a 30 minute video that does talk about, you know, a reasonable suspicion, sort of what those things are and why that's important.
Good, thank you.
Something to think about the reporter statute, the questions that come up are, you know, could I get sued for making a report? Actually, the more legal liabilities, if you don't make a report and you had credible information, there is a potential of a monetary fine or being sued for damages for that. For example, if your question is, could the family come back and sue me for making a report that was later found not to be true? If you had reasonable grounds and you thought it was credible, then no. So that's sort of the flip there, right? It's, it's your, you're more legally liable if you don't act when you have information. There are small cases where you may be a witness in a criminal matter or an administrative matter. My understanding is that's a small amount of cases. And your name should not be released unless subject to a court order. Any other questions about mandatory reporting? Okay, I know that's new. There'll be more to come. But you know, I just think it's a reflection of how detrimental child abuse is to a family and an individual and our community. And so really I think what the legislature was trying to do is widen the net for the people who might have exposure or knowledge about child abuse. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So in regards to mandatory report, I'm familiar with the different areas of that for a long time. And I don't, I don't believe that applies to me anymore in all the areas. So this is, so the mandatory report for elected officials specifically deals with child abuse and not the other topics of mandatory report.
That's correct. Councillor Pishanary, it's a good question. For example, as an attorney, I think I also have a, for elderly abuse, you know, that same mandatory reporter requirement. This change was just the statute to the 419B, which deals with child abuse. Okay. Next is information security. So this is obviously a topic that's getting more notoriety and more attention, I would say, just sort of everywhere. Local governments are subject to cyber attacks. So for example, I think it was Tillamook County had a cyber attack, a ransomware attack a few years ago, which was impactful to their county. It's, this is another interesting area to me, right? Councillors aren't employees, so you don't have like sort of access to our internal databases and other things, but you do have an email address and you do have mobile devices. And those are two areas that can be significant when it comes to information security. So just a note here about phishing. Those are those emails where someone purportedly looks to have authority, should be asking you questions about your password or other information. And as elected officials, councillors can be more susceptible to what they call, I think they call it spear phishing or more targeted attacks. Your information is just out there, right? Because you're an elected official and there's just more information out there. So just be aware. If you get an email that looks strange. And the next slide actually has, this is from our IT department. I reached out to them just to say, hey, what should the, what should the councillors be thinking about? So these are just items here. If a message looks weird, it probably is. Don't even open it. You can tell IT about it or delete it. If you'll never, you should never get a message from IT asking you for your password. And then if you get a message from someone at the city, it should always be from a city email address. So it's really critical to check that from line. It's always the Springfield dash org.gov. Mobile devices can be lost. Please let us know as soon as possible if that happens. And there, you use that mobile device to access your city email or city information. And then that's IT help desk. That's their email address. You can always contact the city manager's office or us, but also feel free to contact them directly if you have questions or particularly if you see something that seems odd, they'd like to know about it. Okay, political activities. So we're coming into an election year. This is another area where I think the interface is interesting because as elected officials, you know, if you had a job description, political activities would be like the main heart of your job. And so, and staff are outright prohibited from participating in political activities during working hours on city time. And so this is something that has not been abused here at the city. I don't want to give the impression that it is a problem. But when we do, especially on years when we have ballot measures come forward, it's always this sort of interesting tension between staff like, can I do this? Can I not do this? You know, because everyone just wants to stay on the right side of what the law says for political activities. So staff always needs to provide impartial information. Impartial is defined, you know, I mean, I put it up there, you know what it is, what dispassionate. And we do ask the state to review our materials to try and give us that safe harbor to make sure that that information is impartial. Let's start, it's getting increasingly more difficult to do at the state as more have to do with the state than with us. But something to think about in terms of if you are participating on a ballot measure, staff can be with you to provide kind of answer those questions, right? Those sort of subject matter expert questions, but the political activities with the PAC and the elected officials. So even things like, gosh, I don't know, like AJ couldn't help you put together a letter to the editor that would go out on behalf of the council, you know, that kind of thing. So we can always work through kind of the workaround with you on that, but just be mindful of that. And that staff is always kind of worried about that, I think, in terms of answering those requests. And you know, my sense is when you're in those areas where it's kind of like, what do we do here? It's best just to ask, you know, you just call Nancy and say, hey, this is what's happening. How do we do this? You know, or Amber or somebody or Neil who's working on it. But that is one area where I think how councillors interface with the community and the organization is a lot different than how staff does. So any questions on political activities or anything? No, nothing's changed there much. It's the same, same thing, but there is a complaint process through the Secretary of State. You know, and it's something that the public is aware of and looks for. Okay. Last item that I wanted to discuss tonight is discrimination, harassment and retaliation. So we haven't, we've brought this to the council, I think over the years in some manner, but I'd like to have a little more kind of concrete discussion. So you're aware of what applies to you and what doesn't. So the city does have a policy. It's, we, our policies are called administrative regulations that prohibits discrimination and harassment and then retaliation, which is if you take some adverse employment action against somebody who brings forward a complaint of discrimination or harassment. And the purpose behind that policy is to respect the dignity of all individuals. It is also required by state law. There is an Oregon Workplace Fairness Act, which has particular things that are required to have in your policy. So when you look at that policy, you'd be like, this is interesting. It has some things in here, but it's really written to protect and think about people who are experiencing these items, right? Maybe experiencing these actions of harassment or discrimination. What do I do? Who do I talk to? You know, it talks about how you can talk to Booley, those kinds of examples. And I think it's just really that recognition of trying to talk to those folks who do have a complaint and what they should do. So the city's policy does apply to employees, obviously independent contractors, volunteers and elected officials. It's one of the few areas where elected officials are specifically called out. So it's something that you should be aware of. I think bottom line, what I want you to know tonight is that we have this policy. We take it seriously. If people are aware of discrimination or harassment, they're to bring it to the city and we would investigate it. I think the other thing to think about with discrimination and harassment and retaliation, when you discuss these policies or these actions is it can feel really fraught. You know, it's always evolving. It's always changing. And I think it can make people feel uncomfortable and particularly another area where councillors, I think, need to be aware of a power differential. You know, their role as a leader in the community and as a city councillor, people may view them differently when they're interacting. So it's something to consider there. I think the other thing to think about is this concept of a protected class. So a protected class is a group of individuals or who identify as in a particular group or in a particular activity and are protected under the law. So think about your traditional protected classes, you know, that's religion, disability, background, gender, those kinds of things. But each state also has expanded that definition over time. And Oregon has things that in its protected class that you may not necessarily see by just talking with somebody. And those could be things, obviously disability, I think is a huge one there, but even someone who has filed a worker's comp claim is technically in a protected class in Oregon. Could be gender identity, fluidity issue, you know, those kinds of things. And so I think, you know, one way to kind of get around this idea of like, avoid, is that person in protected class? It's just to assume that everyone you interact with has something that could make them be considered into a protected class. And it's not to make you paranoid, but I think it's just to bring a little level of awareness to how we talk to folks and how we interact with each other. And then that gets you past sort of that sort of issue about, you know, what should I be doing? It's just like, you know, I'm just going to have a greater awareness when I am interacting with city staff in the community about these issues. And in a way that may be perceived as me being discriminatory or harassing. Does that make sense? Okay. Good question.
Yeah, what would, um, what would you consider the standard for presenting an allegation of discrimination or harassment to the Human Resources Department? I would say that most of the, most of the discrimination or harassment that we hear about is probably going to be varying degrees of credible. And so at what point is it sort of incumbent on us through our due diligence to report it to HR, to go to CHAM and say, hey, I've heard about this this incidence of discrimination or harassment as a city. Should, I mean, if, if there's a it, if there's a degree of uncertainty, I mean, if you're, if you're in some doubt, would the presumption be to report it just in case?
I think so.
Okay.
There's no, I guess this is a real lawyer answer. It depends. It's a reasonable standard, right? It's not going to be, sorry, but it's you get to section five and you're good to go. So I think it would depend on the type of information and, you know, you can always bring something. I, I guess I would err on the side of bringing something forward.
Yeah, you know, I wasn't expecting you to have the definitive answer here. I mean, you know, there's, there are going to be different, different standards for different people.
A policy that I will give you will give you some examples of the type of behavior. So that may be a good guide to look at. You know, that talks about everything from particular jokes, things in writing, you know, pervasive, you know, even physical conduct. And that may be like, like, oh yeah, okay, this is getting there. And this kind of what I want to be clear that we're talking about here is our interaction as an organization with one another. You know, you may hear about in your role as a councillor, if there could be constituents says, hey, I think there's discrimination happening in Springfield here this way, could be another organization or something private, you could still bring that forward to the city manager to address or to be aware of. But what I'm talking about here is how we communicate and interact with one another.
Okay. So before we go to Damian, I, I think I had a question about the, in the policy, it says go directly to human resources. Given how the hierarchy of this, of the city works, should we be, or should, if we saw something, should we be going directly to that, to the HR? Should we be coming back to either you or Nancy with it?
I think in the case of the council, you can come to me or Nancy or HR and the, the policy is written more from the direction of employees.
Right.
And even in there, I think it would, I think there might be something that lets them go to someone else. It's like HR's all branding. So I think the point is you get it to someone high enough who's going to be able to move up forward.
Perfect. Damian?
Two questions. First of all, so you know, a lot of people talk, I've heard people talk about power dynamic and that city staff works for us and all that stuff. So if there is a case of discrimination with the city, with a city employee and a suit was filed or anything like that, what is the protocol for alerting city council about it? And if there is one, what is the timeline for us to be aware of what's going on at the city? And to you know, one thing that, that I've seen in a lot of situations is that there's this conscious or even unconscious bias when it comes to any type of discrimination. So I'm curious what type of training or what type of conversations are being held around unbiased reporting and action.
Great. Those are great questions. So looking at your first question, talking about when would city council be involved or notified? I think, you know, again, it would depend on the situation. A particular councillor was involved. Like for example, if they're named in a suit, we would be involving the councillor as soon as we could. If it were a situation where perhaps we didn't get to a lawsuit yet, but we have an administrative complaint, we have an investigation and a council were involved, we'd be notifying them as soon as we could. So they could participate or we could get their input. If it's a situation where the city has a discrimination lawsuit that the council, individual councillors not involved in, but would still want to know or make it questions about particularly, we do try and notify you either through city manager's office or city attorney's office or your where, so you're not caught sort of flat footed, like what are you talking about? Particularly if you think it's going to be in the media. And so that again is kind of, it depends answer, but we do try and be responsive to that depending on the situation. Your second question, I think, has to do with, if I got it right, implicit bias or unconscious bias in terms of, does the city do any training revolving around that? Is that right?
Right, but specifically when it comes to any type of reporting or investigations of any type of retaliation or discrimination.
Yeah. I guess I would say that the trainings that the city staff participate in through CIS are, I'd have to look at the one I've recommended to you, whether it really gets into unconscious bias. It is a, in reporting and, in reporting an investigation. It talks more about, you know, the types of behavior that you may observe that would lead to a discrimination claim. So I would have to think about that. I can tell you that, and I put on the front of the AIS, you previously councillor Pitts, you had asked about sort of community based training or training that may be available to the community. And that our idea committee is looking at that, having some opportunity for staff or council to be able to discuss or learn more about unconscious bias and how that can impact operations.
So I just wanted to ask a little bit of a follow up question to councillor Pitts's first question. If we happen to like hear rumblings or somebody's like, I heard of this, which kind of touches on what you said, you know, I heard of this thing happening in Springfield. Who would we go to if it hasn't come to our attention? Would we go to you? Would we go to, if we've heard, if somebody comes and says, well, you know, such and such is happening here because of this thing. And we are like, we don't know about this. Who would we go to ask that of to get in the loop?
I'd recommend that you come to me. Okay. Yeah. I think that way, especially if you're like, you hear rumblings, it's like, what is this? Then you, then we could have like a privileged conversation and I can figure out their next steps from there. You may get looped into HR, city manager's office after that point. But come to me would be the first step.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I think I'm close to time. I have some homework and to confirm that the mandatory reporter has to do with your observations, not things that are related to you. You'll see more information from me and councillor Pitts. I'll be thinking about your question about how unconscious bias can play in reporting and investigations. And if there's, if any of those trainings apply or look at that issue. So. Okay.
I think we are good. Thank you for coming and doing the training. I know that from a compliance perspective, we're going to keep seeing more and more material coming our way as a council and thanks for keeping us straightened out on it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Next item, SDC waiver to encourage affordable home ownership with Katie Carroll.
All right. Put that up a little. How's that noise level? Good? Okay, great. So my name is Katie Carroll and I'm the housing analyst for the city. This is my first time before council and meeting most of you. So it's nice to be here and I'm excited to work with you all on meeting Springfield's housing needs. So I do have two items for council tonight. This first one, I think, is going to take a little bit longer than the 15 minutes we have. But I think the other one should move fairly quickly because I only have one question for council related to that. Okay, so diving into this one. This is a potential program to waive system development charges for affordable homeownership housing. Council discussed this back in May and directed staff to further design a draft program and bring it back to council. If there are any members of the public, I don't see this, but for the sake of the recording, I guess, if there's anyone that's wondering what system development charges or SDCs are, those are charges that are imposed on development to accumulate funding necessary to provide sufficient capacity and infrastructure for that development. So the city collects these for transportation, stormwater and local wastewater. And waiving SDCs means that the city has fewer funds for capital projects in those areas. Waiving SDCs can be a way to incentivize types of development that might not otherwise happen because it reduces the upfront cost of doing that development. And this is something the city already does for accessory dwelling units. Up on the screen here, I have summarized some program objectives for this program. And those are also detailed in the draft program guidelines in your packet tonight. So I'm going to skip over those for the sake of time. So first I'm going to give a quick overview of the proposed program that is before council tonight. And then I have three questions for council that are related to the design of this program. And for each of those, I'll get a little bit further into the details of the program guidelines and staff's recommendations. So first staff is proposing this be started as a three-year pilot program. And that for housing units that are granted a waiver, that those be required to remain affordable for a period of five years, which is what council had discussed back in May. The guidelines are written so that this waiver would be available to housing intended for homeownership, so not affordable rental housing, which is also what council discussed back in May. And staff is recommending that the waiver be available to housing that's going to be sold to households with incomes of up to 100% of the area median income or AMI. That any developer be able to apply for the waiver and that the waiver be a grant if certain conditions are met or otherwise be a forgivable loan. And I have noted on the screen here in italics, a couple of places where the recommendations before council tonight differ from what was discussed in May. And when I get to the questions for council, we'll, uh, touch on that again. Yeah.
Um, I, should I hold questions till the end? Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, great. Um, so the potential fiscal impact of this program would vary depending on how council sets it up. So there are two questions before council tonight that would kind of, uh, decide how broadly the waiver is available. And thus kind of the potential, uh, fiscal impact it could have. So those have to do with the income level that council sets the program at. And then what developers can apply for the waiver. Um, so staff is aware of two projects, um, that depending on how council sets up this waiver program, might be able to apply and be found eligible for the waiver within the next year. So the first one of those is Habitat for Humanities Fisher Village Project, um, which is their current affordable homeownership project in Springfield. And based on what Habitat has paid for SDCs for units that have already been permitted, um, staff is estimating that the maximum, uh, potential fiscal impact of waiving SDCs for this project, would be a hundred thousand dollars and that would be, uh, 10 additional units, which is kind of the rest of the project that hasn't been permitted. Did you want to ask a question?
So could you clarify for us that that's just the city's portion of it? We would still be required to, to collect Willamalane's portion of it?
Yeah, that's a good, uh, thank you. That's a clarification. So this is just applying to the city's SDCs being waived. Um, and then the other project that staff is aware of is from a private developer, Cultivate Inc. So that developer worked with Square One Villages on the C Street Co-op. Um, and they are looking at doing between, I think approximately eight to 16 units of affordable homeownership sometime within the next year. And, um, they're still fairly on in the development phases. So staff wasn't able to create a dollar estimate for that project. And then the last thing I'll note on the fiscal impact is because staff is proposing this as a pilot to start, that would provide some room to make adjustments to the program if necessary, kind of depending on what the actual, um, fiscal impact is. Were there any other? Okay, great. So now I'm going to get into the three questions that staff has for council tonight. So for each of these questions, I have, um, some background and staff's recommendations related to it. So I'm wondering.
Let's hang on because we're going to start running into questions here, Joe.
Well, I, I, I can wait a bit. I mean, I have some general questions, not, specific to, not specific answers to your questions, but I have some in general questions.
Okay, so then, then we'll start queuing up and let you finish your presentation and then we'll get into it.
Sounds fair.
Great. And I had a question for you all, which is, so for each of these questions, do you want me to just kind of run through all of the background information, and the questions, and then have council discuss all three of them at once? Or do you want to kind of discuss each one after it's presented?
So it's probably best for us to go through each one as it's presented.
Okay, so then should we take, if there are clarifying questions before I get into that? Do you want to take those now?
Then let's do that. Okay, so let's go to Joe and then we'll go to Leonard and then we'll come back to Cory.
Okay, thank you, Sean. So I have, um, I know we were talking about 80% and somebody decided to go to 100%. I know, I think I remember in the packet, that it was mentioned that, that council said, let's look at 100% of the AMI, as opposed to the 80% basically, basically relative to this screen you have up now.
Right.
Who's that? Whose idea was that? Counselor or staff?
So that's staff's recommendation and that's based on, um, having had conversations with the local nonprofit developers, and then also a private developer cultivating that I mentioned, who's doing affordable homeownership. Um, so I can get into that more when we get to this question.
No, that's, that's fine. I was really trying to find the root of where that came from.
Okay.
So with that being said, um, that, that change alone may stimulate more interest, which is exactly what, why you did that. And then, um, that being said, you're, you're also talking about a three-year pilot program where, we kind of know where pilot programs go. They never end. I mean, really have, how many pilot programs have we stopped? When we, we still have people living in trailers, that, that are okay to put anywhere they want on any property that they want in a city, which was a, a one-year pilot program. It's extended to two years and now we're looking at the three years. But that all still being said, um, does Eugene have a waiver of SDCs program? And why they know, I know they have just the same issues we have. So do they have a program like this? What is it modeled after? And what percentages do they use if they have that model?
So Eugene does have a program, um, I encountered about, I was able to find about four cities that had one. So Eugene's program is a little bit different because they don't waive SDCs. They actually set aside funding.
Right.
For that, so they use a competitive, um, RFP process.
Right.
There's, is, so their income level is set at 80% for homeownership units, but they also have their program available for rental units. I believe that for rentals, the affordability is set at 60%. Um, so they have kind of a set amount of funding for, per year that they have available for this. And then, um, some criteria in that competitive process.
So the key point is, so the key point is they're not risking anything for their own STC program with their own infrastructure. They're not suffering because they have the finances to be able to pay for those SDCs, which will go right back to the city coffers. Correct?
Um, can you rephrase that question? Sorry, just trying to understand.
They have, they have a funding stream that will reimburse the, the developers, those STC charges. And so that funding stream that pays for those developers' STC charges, those funds go back to the city general fund. So they can be used how the city desires, how are the city desires, correct?
Correct. I'm stepping up to say that Eugene collects, uh, construction excise tax, which is what they use to fund, um, this type of program, whereas Springfield does not have that funding source in the construction excise tax.
So the other three or four cities that you spoke with, how do they make up the loss of the SDCs or do they, or do they just, just take the hit?
Um, I'm not sure. So I only spoke to staff from Eugene, so I would need to look into that further and how the other cities, um.
I thought you said there's four or five cities that had the similar program.
Right. I looked into those, but I didn't look into the financial details of that.
Gotcha. And then, um, so the city, Eugene has their own parks department. And which comes out of city funding. And then, but Springfield has a separate taxing entity, which is Willamalane Park and Recreation District, which collects SDCs on their, on their own. And so the, uh, the funding for, there's no hit in regards to the parks recreation, but, we take a greater hit because we're taking the bulk of that STC and, and we're the only ones suffering that loss. So in that, in that, in that same statement, then if we have a three-year program, but we also bumped from the, from the 80% to the 100% AMI, do we know, uh, how, how, what kind of financial impact that will mean to us? And I know that the estimate for the one project alone is a hundred thousand dollar hit, right? So we don't know, is it the next, next project? I can't remember which slide it was, one or two back where you had another outfit that is doing, um, there you go. Uh, Cultivate Incorporated is looking at eight to 16 units, which has, based on the Fisher Village, has approximate impact of about 170,000, 175,000, on the top end. So we're looking at over a quarter of a million dollars in less STC collection on two, only two projects. And so I would, uh, I'm going to put my suggestion now, just for something to people to gurgitate on is that I would suggest, not necessarily doing a time pilot program, but a cap on financial program. This is how much we can take a hit, nothing more. So if it, if it burns out in 18 months or two years or one year or three years, we know it's got an end to it and that's the most the city is going to take a hit for.
Okay. Joe, do you have anything else?
No, that's for now. No, that's it.
Leonard?
I, I hope I'm not jumping ahead in your presentation. Um, you, uh, you laid out the criteria for, households that would qualify for the SDCs. Um, what I'm looking for is what the criteria are for a, an afford, what's called an affordable house.
So the, like what the affordability would be set on?
Yes. What, what would the, what would the house have to cost in order not to be affordable anymore?
So the way that the draft program, um, guidelines are set up, and this does sort of jump a little bit forward. So I'll do a little bit of explanation that we might, um, get into again later. So there are kind of two different ways that someone could be found eligible for the waiver. Um, under one pathway, um, if there was already other legal documentation in place securing a unit's affordability, um, we wouldn't necessarily be looking at the unit's price. But then under the other pathway where, so if there wasn't some kind of, um, documentation in place that secured a unit's affordability, the city would be looking at both the household income and then, um, the price of the unit and the way that that's defined, in the guidelines is based on the household's income. So it's a percentage of their monthly, income, kind of a maximum of that that could go towards housing expenses. So it's set at 35% is the way it is in the draft guidelines.
So how, um, how do we determine whether the household qualifies for a home loan? I mean, for the house, you know, you're saying that there's no particular value on the house, that, um, that, that you would countenance a loan for or a, or, or a mortgage for. So I mean, is there an amount beyond which these people at the, in this table right here, would no longer qualify for a home loan?
Yeah, so there are kind of two different ways that you can set up, um, like an affordable price. One is coming up with sort of a set cap, like houses of no more than $400,000 would be that way of doing it. Um, and then the other way is tying it to the household income, which is what I've described. It's in the draft program guidelines.
Yeah.
And kind of both of them have benefits and drawbacks. So that first setting a maximum price cap, that does provide more predictability for a developer upfront to know what that price would be. Um, however, given various individual factors and like interest rates, for example, um, that could result in a monthly payment for someone that is higher than, you know, maybe we thought it would be based on setting, uh, the sales price. So like right now, for example, with really high interest rates, a house that is $400,000 now might result in a much higher monthly payment for someone. So that was kind of the thought in tying it to the actual monthly payment.
Uh, I, I think there's a danger built in, and I think if you think about it, you can see it, um, the danger built into, uh, building or, um, making affordable homeownership based on the income level of the household as opposed to the value of the house thereby. I mean, you know, that I, it seems to me like an affordable home would be, would cost a certain amount. I mean, it, I, I, we, we can't just base it completely on, uh, unless I'm misunderstanding. We can't just base it completely on the income level of the people who are buying, can we?
So, um, from what I've seen from the other programs that I looked at, they generally are based around household income. Um, so they set a, you know, 80% of the area median income as sort of the cap. And so there are different ways that individual developers kind of arrive at what price, um, is affordable. And so what the city is doing here is just setting that affordability price. So it can be done by basing, as you're suggesting, based on the price of the housing unit itself. Um, that requires making assumptions as well. So it's just sort of a trade off of which assumptions you're making.
Uh, yeah, the, the, the danger that I'm alluding to is that the people's declared income level and their actual income level might be two different things. I mean, I, I, I don't think that we can really count on the fact that a household is saying that they make X amount per year, is the actual thing. And you know, and if they're, if they're buying a really expensive house and living beyond, you know, quote beyond their means, but are actually getting their income from different sources that are, they're not declaring. Then tha- at that point, the benefit that we're, um, that, that we're supposedly, um, extending to people, for this STC, um, waiver, um, would, would be negated. Um, because the, because the homeowners who are showing this income level are actually, are, are actually not enjoying that income level. They're enjoying an income level that's roughly twice.
So Leonard, did you, did you have anything else? So we can go to Cory and then.
Yeah, let, yeah, go, go ahead. I'm sorry. I, I, I didn't, I, I didn't mean to filibuster.
Uh, well, I appreciate your question because it was really kind of wrapped up my question that I just wanted us to talk out loud, um, about how we were defining affordable housing. Because exactly as you explained, it could be done differently. And I want folks who are watching to just understand how we are defining that. One of the challenges I think always with housing, Leonard, is that, you know, the value of a home isn't determined like the value of, you know, an apple, you know, it just, it's just, it's a different market. And it's part of what makes it so wiggly for us to try to figure out what's affordable. Because I think of like five years ago when we bought our house, how much it costs and how much houses are selling for. And we wouldn't, you know, necessarily maybe be able to afford it, you know, that kind of stuff that wiggles around. So I appreciate you bringing that up around the link between income and the value of the house so that we could just, mostly so we could talk about it and know that, we, we could choose whichever way to go or a combination of how we define it. It's just getting really clear about what it is. And back to the, the, the point of, um, of this, which is how do we get developers to build units, that folks who fit within whatever realm of affordability we're defining can afford to purchase and move into so that we have a homeowner. So I, I appreciate that because depending on how we look at it, we're like, how do we, how do we get those units built? So the people can purchase them and move into them and live in Springfield. And then the other sort of thing that I had, which is, you know, thinking about counselor visionary and talking about, you know, we look at the numbers, we try to, to, to quantify what that means impact wise for the city of Springfield. And one of the things that we don't talk about is, since this is homeownership, um, they are, you know, what, what is that going to look like in terms of future revenue, in terms of like property taxes and, and that sort of thing. So it's like, how do we kind of compare the, the apples and apples? As opposed to just like, okay, here's how much it's going to cost us from these fees. But in what other ways might we be getting revenue moving forward? Because these are units and properties that folks own. So that's all I had. Really a question. It's just more like, how do we also make that part of the conversation?
Okay, so before we go to Joe, maybe we can get sort of focused on, because we've got like four more, four questions here. So are people comfortable with, um, a program that's designed around the 100% area medium income, median income?
Yes.
Joe, Damian, are you kind of good with, with it about being a 100% of area median income? And I know that there's some questions about the length of the pilot and some of the other stuff that we need to get into, but just conceptually, is everybody comfortable with this question?
I think it's too great of a risk for me.
So do you want to go back? Do you want to go back to 80%? Like, is it the financial outlay?
Yep.
Okay.
Eight, 80% would be a, a lot closer to what I was, uh, what I had in mind. Yeah.
And I'm just looking at it, Sean, as far as, okay, if we want to target a specific population by increasing the valuation, we are broadening it to the point of where, other folks, they're competing. All these folks are going to be competing in my mind. And, and as far as what, what, Leonard was saying, you know, I assume that these buyers are going to go through a mortgage purchase. And I assume that they're going to go through a mortgage lender. And I assume that there's going to go through some underwriters. And so I make the assumption that it's going to be heavily depend upon the debt to income ratio, which will, make sure that they do these statements of exactly what their income is. So it's going to come out clean, in my mind, but I think again, that, that 100% is too much of a risk for the city. And, and I think it also lessens the, the total numbers that may be available if we have a, a cap on how much STC we subsidize these homes with.
Well, I think that's the, that's the other question, right? Mike, I, you know, when you look at the, when you look at the overall risk, I think we've got to impose a cap that is different, that's monetary opposed to timeline based.
Absolutely.
So I think the question, I think we were saying that we want, we want 80%, but how much is everybody comfortable with putting a cap on it?
And, you know, and also Sean, sorry to interrupt, but I think that's also a question for our city manager. Because the city manager is the one that's going to have to figure out how to budget what was lost. So how much can we observe without getting ourselves into a critical posture?
I don't call ready for office.
Yeah, it's not a political question. It's a financial budget question.
And we've just been through the training about this.
That's exactly right.
Well, you know, I, I think that the, the real strain in the city's budget is really a focus on our general fund. That's where we have our structural. That's where we have our structural imbalance. So the system development charges are generally focused more on improvements. And so being able to maintain our infrastructure. So we know that it's challenging to maintain the infrastructure that we have. I think the our, excuse me, our community has done, has really been very supportive of the, for instance, with the street bond of trying to get more infrastructure and more streets repaired. But it does put you further behind. It'd be hard to quantify on a budgetary basis without knowing the number and scale of projects. But I could say that it would make the city, it would put us more behind our ability to maintain.
So so could we do this, right? Because we're going to have to come back and approve the program anyway, is that maybe you could recommend, you know, a number that would be reasonable for a check in, right? To go three years or X amount of dollars, you know, before we talk about it again, so that we have a a safety check, if you will, if this thing takes off.
I think that's reasonable. I, you know, I think the conversation about, you know, I know that the community does value affordable housing. And we realize that that's that housing is a real critical issue here, not just for our community members, also for our employers. I've seen that here with the city, people interested to come work here in the city. But then when they see the the price of housing are unable to do so. So it is a real issue. It is kind of a trade off, right? So we have more affordable housing. We do these waivers. Maybe that sets us back a little bit more in our infrastructure repairs. However, you're hoping that over time, people are going to stay in that housing, stay in our community. And you would see homeownership, which is a good thing, and and increased assessed value. So it's a trade off.
Okay, before we go to the next question, Joe.
Send one my and thank you, Nancy. Appreciate that. The other part to that SDCs though is that how much the SDC fees go towards our our payroll for our planning staff? And then that department, development department, I I know some of that money goes right back to that department. So there's there's a personnel trade off, not only in infrastructure but personnel. So I think it's very critical that unless I'm wrong, I got somebody walking up that's going to tell me I'm wrong.
Yes, counselor visionary, I I I can step in on the SDC.
Sure.
Because I probably help hit you out here. So we'll step back. So on putting a dollar figure, I think is going to be really tough. I think as we come forward and you're looking at approving the program, we can work together and kind of give you a history of where the SDCs have been, how much we collect a year and kind of look at that split. And and one thing to remember is not all of our SDCs go to repairs. Some of that is to provide for growth. So we're talking about growth, but then we also need to make sure we're funding for that growth. And how do we make sure we get upgraded signals, intersections, things like that to to account for that? So but to your other question, which you have to remind me because I was stepping back to a previous one, was.
Staffing ratios.
The the actual amount that we pay for staffing is very limited and it has to be very specific. And it's to administration of the SDC program itself. So if I was to look historically, there is probably that this amount of staffing paid for out of that. Let's so let's just take my funding. My position, I think, is there's like one percent or two percent is out of that SDC. And it's really for that planning and programming of those and developing those projects.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, but also don't forget to include the five percent technology fee that we will lose as well.
Yeah, well, then the technology fee is kind of different. That goes to something different. You're.
Don't they pay that based off of the SDC? The five percent.
Double check. I mean, we can double check. I I'm off the top of my head. I don't remember exactly where that five percent comes in and what it's based on.
Right. Builders remind me all the time that they pay five percent for all the permit dollars that they that they pay for.
Yeah, I I think when I think about this program and what gets where I struggle with that question of putting a cap on the amount of SDCs is it's hard to quantify how many projects we're actually going to see. Because what Katie was trying to do with the hundred percent AMI or this and that, what I heard Katie reference from what she was hearing from developers is it's really tough right now with the materials costs and and all of that and supplies to build affordable units today. And so really what they're looking for is a mix of affordable plus market rate. And so it's that balance of how can they make a project pencil today?
Well, so I I I think the issue is not that it whether or not it pencils or not about the cap. It's more, you know, as a body that, you know, we can be a little bit risk adverse and wanting to have some sort of safety check that that says, you know, if it goes crazy, right? We want to know that we've actively decided to to plan our capital that way, right? So having a having a dollar figure is not about completing projects. It's more to go, okay, how do we have a natural update mechanism that so that we we can understand what's going on before we wait three years from now?
Yeah, no, and I think maybe the annual budget, because we'll have an idea of what the numbers are as we look to preparing that budget. Because we'll know what's on the books, because these are forgivable grants or loans. So we're going to track how much is out there. And so we can, you know, that we've waived. And I think maybe two years is too long to go rather than putting a cap. It's like maybe we check in annually.
Yeah, so here's the thing, right? It needs to have a cap.
Okay.
Is, you know, because we if we're if we're going to walk back from this, we've got to at least say clearly what we're thinking. And by by saying that upfront, we understand that we're going to check in and have a conversation about it.
Yeah, I so I think in that next conversation, I think talking about historical numbers will help us arrive at a cap. I think if you were putting me on a spot today to come up with a cap, it'd be really difficult to recommend a number.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Like, take time, figure out what it is, right? It's not really about the dollar figure that's attached to it. It's about understanding that this would create programs, not to create holes from like from a capital expenditure perspective. You guys craft that however you want from a professional perspective. All right, Leonard.
Um, just one quick question. Is there a drop dead date for either the projects that were specified there for the Habitat for Humanity project or the other one? As I they seemed like worthy projects, and I certainly don't want to lose either of them as a result of dithering over the SDCs.
Um, so in terms of a drop dead date, you mean by which?
Is is there a date that they have to be approved by in order to make sure that they actually get built?
So the way I would actually think about that is, so Habitat for Humanity, for example, they kind of base the price of the house, to my understanding, on what the buyer's actual income is. So for them, it's more calculus of how much additional subsidy do they need to find to make that up? So the SDC waiver isn't going to necessarily stop that project from moving forward. It may just take them longer to get to where they need to be. And then in terms of the other project mentioned, so that developer, I think their understanding initially was that they may be qualified for the waiver, though I know what council had first discussed was limiting it to nonprofits, which we'll get to as well. So in that case, I don't want to speculate for them, but maybe that would mean that some of those units are not sold at a lower income level, but a higher one, just kind of depending on, you know, it depends on each developer and how they sort of make up those subsidies. They all kind of do it a little.
We're not necessarily losing either one.
No, but you, yeah, so the habitat one, I guess, long story, I think they might need to seek additional subsidy. And for the other one, then maybe that would impact what AMI level it's sold at.
Corey.
Thank you. And I may be thinking of this just slightly different than everybody else, and I just want to say it out loud. I think that we need housing along the entire continuum of housing. And I I hear the mayor talking about, you know, that we're a little bit risk averse. My concerns around us being risk averse to leaning into what are what are the ways that we can incentivize affordable housing is we're going to end up with all market rate housing. And I don't, I think a lot of us don't want that, right? So there's a lot of things in between sort of subsidized or or wraparound services or or supportive housing and market rate housing. And so taking a program this size that that's sort of scalable and saying, which is why I'm like, yes, a hundred percent. It's like, what are the ways that we can really incentivize that? So we and we we get some affordable housing units built that are guaranteed to stay affordable for five years. So there there are things built into this program that I really like because they add to that whole continuum of housing that I think that we need. And if we lean into housing, again, I might be like pie in the sky optimistic. It's like if we lean into housing, we're going to see, you know, we're going to see more market rate housing that's going to help to offset the SDCs for these affordable housing projects. So I'm just, I'm just saying, we need all of it. And if there are places that we can incentivize affordable housing to balance out the market rate or or and the subsidized or the not subsidized, but the supportive, because people are going to come for me, the supportive housing, but I want that.
All right, Joe, and then we're going to dive into the other questions.
And the way I look at, I understand what you're saying, Corey, but I still look at it from the other angle. Is that if you start at eighty percent, there's nothing that says, because it's nothing's happening. It's going to hear crickets that we can't increase it at a later time. I just don't want to start at the top and then all of a sudden have to backpedal. So that's my, that's my opinion. And also I'm very fearful and apprehensive as to how much this is going to cost the city. We're we're not Eugene. We don't have tons of funds. We don't have construction tax. We just don't have near the spending powers Eugene. And we cannot go forward pretending like we're Eugene and have programs like Eugene. We have got to model it as under a Springfield budget.
All right, so let's go to the next question.
Okay, so a little bit of background on this one. So I think I alluded to this earlier, but when council first saw this proposed program, staff had suggested that it be available to nonprofits that are doing affordable homeownership. So this is kind of the other area where this would broaden the availability or narrow it, depending on how council goes. But staff is recommending making the waiver available to any developer to apply. And the reason for that being so there are three nonprofits locally that are doing affordable homeownership. And of them only Habitat currently has a project, which is that Fisher Village project, and that will add twelve single unit dwellings. There is that other private developer that I mentioned who is interested in doing affordable homeownership as well. And so the thought on making this more broadly available is that it might incentivize more developers to do this kind of work while helping those that are already trying to do it, make those projects pencil affordably.
Leonard.
Well, if we're, I mean, to go back to the first question, if we're going to base affordable homeownership on the people who are applying for the mortgages, then how can we figure out whether these developments are actually going to be affordable or not? We don't know who the homeowners are going to be yet. Do you see? I mean, it it seems like it's a chicken or the egg problem.
So I think that's related to the third question somewhat, which is maybe I'll just go ahead and explain. Could you advance one slide? Okay, so this might help explain this a little bit better. So in these draft program guidelines, there are kind of two compliance pathways, which are basically two different ways that a developer could be found eligible for the waiver. So under this option A, this would most likely be like the Habitat for Humanity, the square one type of developer who's looking at doing more long term affordability and has some kind of legal documentation in place that secures the housing's affordability, like a deed restriction or some kind of compliance agreement. And so if there was some kind of legal documentation in place that secured a unit's affordability like that, the developer could submit that to the city. The city would review that to see if it aligns with the program guidelines. So basically that it secures affordability for five years at least at whatever the AMI level council decides to go with. And then if it were to be resold within that five year period of time, that it is resold affordably. So this option would kind of rely on whatever other legal mechanisms are in place to secure affordability. So that's kind of how it would be handled under one way. And then under the other way, if there wasn't this kind of documentation in place, then the city would actually request that the applicant give the actual buyer's household income information and their actual monthly payment information to the city. So the city would verify that it meets the program guidelines. And in the program guidelines, we've defined what an affordable price is.
Okay, so let's go back and do the first question before we kind of dive into the second one. So for a minute, is that is the second question, whether or not we want nonprofits and for profits to be? Okay.
Or just limit it to nonprofits.
Joe.
Thank you, Sean. I don't, if we want to, like Corey says, I agree. If we want to have houses built, then why would we why would we limit who can build them? So I think we ought to include developers as well. They're going to have to pencil it out. If they're not interested, they won't. They won't apply. That's kind of self self limiting, I think. So there's no reason to put a rule up to eliminate someone when they can possibly do it. So I don't see any difference between them and anybody else. And I'm go ahead and move on to the next one, Sean, is that I I think option B to me is the cleanest. And the waiver can be forgivable at sixteen percent per year afterwards, which will which will eliminate the debt after five, after five years.
Okay, so let's not get into the compliance pathways yet. I'm looking around. You had nods about this, you know, developers and nonprofits being available to use the program. All right, okay, so I think.
That side just so everyone can see it.
I think we're good on that one.
Okay, so just clarity for me. So we're not limiting it to just nonprofits. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so then let's talk about the compliance pathway.
So can I clarify on that really quickly? So this is not a question of whether to pick between A and B. The question, that was just kind of background for the third question.
Okay.
Um, so the, I guess, the reasoning on why staff has proposed having, so the program is proposed as having both of these pathways. And the reasoning that staff has for that is basically that we think this will help balance minimizing the administration for the program while also creating a low risk that the waivers being given for housing units that are not actually sold affordably. So these option A type of developments, staff is imagining these are more the types of affordable housing units that are like community land trusts, or they're receiving other subsidies where they're being monitored. So basically, what staff is trying to do with that option is to rely on whatever that other legal mechanism in place that secures a unit's affordability to do that monitoring for the city.
So from from a sort of a developer perspective, it would be depending on your model, depending on your choice, you could go route A or you could go route B.
Correct. So basically, if they did not have any kind of legal documentation in place securing affordability, or if it didn't meet the city's requirements, then they would go route B, where the city would require the actual buyer's information and the price that the buyer is paying for the housing unit.
And these two options are designed specifically to reduce our administrative cost.
Correct. So that basically this removes staff from having to review every buyer for every housing unit.
Joe.
Thank you, Sean. And that makes more sense. Thank you. It makes, yeah, I understand that now. Although it makes some assumptions that staff made with the hundred percent AMI as opposed to a hundred percent or eighty percent. So I would agree with this compliance pathway, but I do not agree with it with the percentage or of the AMI. I would think it would be, I would like to see eighty percent AMI. And then the option B would show a sixteen percent forgiven forgiven per year under the eighty percent model.
Can I clarify as a clarifying question, councillor visionary? Um, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand. So the twenty percent is based off of five years, so twenty percent per year equaling a hundred percent. So not based off the.
I'm sorry, yeah, I got it twisted around in my brains. It happens a lot.
Don't worry. So in that case, is the twenty percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, my my bad. But a hundred percent should be changed to eighty percent in my mind, and I and I think there's others that agree.
Any other questions?
So we could probably advance, yep, to the question.
Did we provide you with an answer for question one yet?
Eighty percent.
Okay.
Okay. I think you, I was going to clarify that, too. So then for this final question, does council want to minimize administration for the program by offering the waiver as a grant under this option A pathway? And then a forgivable loan under the option B pathway?
Yeah, I think I'm fine with that. Damian?
Yes, are there any situations where an applicant will have to repay any of this money? Whether we find evidence or something not so great that might cause us to say, hey, give us our dang money back?
That's a great question. Thanks for bringing that up because I didn't get to. Could we go back one slide again? So kind of the other big distinctive piece between these two different pathways. So under the option A, we're providing this as a grant and under option B as a forgivable loan, as I mentioned. And so in the forgivable loan context, that would be secured with a promissory note and a lien. So if that initial buyer were to. were to, um, sell the housing unit within the five years of the affordability period, they would be required to pay the city a reduced amount of the waived SDCs, depending on, you know, how much time is left in the affordability period. So under that circumstance, um, they would have to pay, sorry, some of the waived SDCs. Um, I think Counselor Pitts, are you referring more to the developer having to pay some of the waived SDCs?
Uh, either the developer or even, you know, uh, because Craig is wrong, this, the money that we would give would be to the developer, not to the individual homeowner or potential homeowner.
Correct. So the idea of waiving SDCs is that those savings could then be passed on through to the homeowner in the form of a reduced, uh, sales price.
So, so yes, I mean, I guess I meant, you know, uh, ju- just thinking, you know, about the situation, uh, to where a for-profit organization might have more resources, uh, or a nonprofit. I mean, once again, just it really depends on the situation, might end up cutting corners, which would end up being counterproductive to what we want to do. And so I'm just curious, uh, are there any situations where they might have to pay back any of that money that we provided?
So, um, under option A, because the city would be providing this as a grant, that would be kind of the uh, risk that the city would be taking on there. However, the thought is that risk would be very low because oftentimes when there are these other affordability documentation things in place, those are either um, kind of being monitored by other agencies or the city under these guidelines has the ability to monitor those ourselves. Um, and there would just kind of be, um, if they were not to follow through with the affordability requirements, that could put them at risk for other work with the city. And depending on kind of what other funding sources they were getting. So there's kind of that built in, um, deterrence there. And then under the option B, um, if the city had this out as a lien, then yeah, they would have the option to, um, regain some of the waived SDCs. So an example of when this might come up would be if the homeowner no longer occupied the housing unit as their primary dwelling and maybe was renting it out instead. Um, so the city would do monitoring for situations like that.
Joe.
Just a quick question from out in, out from left field. Is there any circumstance where if there's going to be building by any party, um, based on what you're talking about, different funding sources? Would the potential of the requirement for prevailing wage come into play, which makes most things unaffordable to build?
I am not, I'm not sure, Sandy.
That's probably a Sandy, that's probably a Sandy question.
I don't know enough about the details of that. So I'm going to call on Sandy to help with that question.
I think she knows exactly what I'm talking about because of different projects where we get hammered with prevailing wage issues. We, is it, is this a setup or potentially ripe for that?
Uh, potentially some of our federal funds, if the projects are large enough, would require that prevailing wage. So then again, it's a matter of, um, is there sufficient subsidy in place with those other funding sources and the SDC waiver to make it affordable for homeownership?
So, so what I've seen typically, and I think you've seen too, is that the moment prevailing wage kicks in, that pretty much boots out all private developers.
Correct. I mean, unless, unless they have some other, I mean, it is possible for private developers to access federal funds. Um, we don't typically see that because they don't typically have the patience to do it when they can develop market rate without all of the strings. But federal funds are not limited to nonprofits. So a private developer.
Right. Yeah. It's just a requirement that whoever's happened to be building, then if it's getting federal funds, they're going to have to pay prevailing wage, no matter what the entity is. And that part I understand. I'm just concerned that it may put some of this, I mean, I, I guess we have to be very cognizant of that being triggered and to help try to prevent that. So, because the higher the cost of the house is going to drive the, the cost to the person that needs it. So, so if we can help try to make sure that that does not happen or help prevent, if possible, then that would be, I think, ideal.
Oh, Leonard.
So, um, the, um, the idea that the developer passes the SDC waiver to the new homeowner in the form of a lower sales price. Is there an enforcement mechanism for that?
So under option B, there is the, uh, the city would be collecting the actual buyer's monthly payment information for housing expenses.
Okay. Well, yeah, that, that's what I was looking at that. And that, that was why I, I had the thought that, you know, there might be a developer who might try to pocket it. But if it's the initial buyer that has to occupy or repay, then they're going to be the ones that are actually directly, um, profiting from it.
Right. So they would be the direct recipient of kind of the passed on SDC.
Okay.
waiver benefits.
Well, yeah, that, that being the case, I would definitely, uh, I would definitely back option B, um, given the choice.
Well, I, I think the, it's an either or, right? Like you're asking us to put.
Do we want to? Yeah. Do both these pathways?
So are, are we, are we saying we want both pathways? Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, option A, um, what is the mechanism for making sure that the SDC waiver that's given to the developer is passed on to the homeowner?
So in that case, we're looking at the, what kind of documentation the developer has in place to secure units affordability. So we're not looking directly at the price in that case, but what, um, if it's secured, the unit's affordability is secured for five years at whatever the area median income level is. And the reason for that being, um, so this, like I said, is targeted more towards those nonprofit developers or developers doing long-term affordability. And they kind of all, um, set affordable sales prices. They figure that out differently. So the idea was to try and avoid setting something that conflicts with how they do it, if they're all doing it a little bit differently. Um, but it is still intended to secure the affordability. So it's not quite as direct of a way to show that it's being passed through. Does that answer your question?
I, it doesn't seem to me like there's any guarantee to be passed through at all. Um, so I'm, I'm hesitant about option A.
So I think, so let's try to wrap the whole conversation up. Do you have enough direction on the que- questions? Because I know you're going to take this back and sort of keep designing and working on the actual program. And the plan is we would get to see it again.
Correct. So, um, I guess for my clarity, so for the first question, we are talking eighty percent AMI. For the second question, not limiting it to nonprofits. And for the third question, that's the one that I'm, um, wanting maybe a little bit more direction on than the one that wasn't one of my questions, but was from you all was, um, a cap. Determining kind of how to look at a cap. And is that cap a maximum for the program or a check-in point?
I would say a pause, right? So when you hit the, when you hit that cap, you're coming back and asking the council, do you want, do you want to continue? Would you want to continue on towards three, towards three years? And I don't know, um, I think we're good with, with option A and, A and B, right? So, Joe?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with A and B, but on the cap thing, as far as I'm very hesitant by saying, hey, let's do a check-in. We got this pilot program and then it goes into perpetuity because we have these convenient check-ins and no one wants to be the bad guy by saying, let's stop this. I mean, I, we've got a ton of check-ins that happen in our city and no one really wants to say, hey, let's stop this because it's, it's a, a tough subject to just stop. But it continues to cost the city. So I, I Sean would be more in favor.
Like an end it, an end date?
An end date. And, and, and that, we can always start it back up. We can always do that, but, but this check-in thing typically tends to send things into perpetuity. I mean, we've seen, seen it a dozen times.
Okay. So Corey, do you have something about the check-in?
Yes.
Perfect.
I, I'm suggesting, um, which I think you suggested is tying it to the budget process so that we're looking at it in relation to the money. Like we're actually looking at, if what we're concerned about is, um, that if we don't collect these SDCs, we're not going to be able to afford these pieces, that if we tie it into the budgeting process and it's like once a year or however, and whether we tie, we attach a number or a trip or whatever to it, so that it actually is part of a big picture and just doesn't sit over here by itself. And we, we just pick an arbitrary number that's too high.
So I, I think we're still going around here. So how about we do this, right? Like we let them put, put together the package, give us the, give us the date that we can, uh, that the amount of money that, you know, our recommendation for the amount of money about when you might wrap it up. And then we can sort of, uh, hash it out at that point. At that point, it can either turn into a choice that we either close the program when we hit that date. Or I think what Corey's suggesting is we tell the city manager to program that amount and you can't exceed that, you know, at a certain time.
Yeah. So to clarify, what I heard from the mayor and what I was working on, thinking through this, because SDCs are complex and the way they budget are complex is bringing some options to you by looking at all the numbers and saying, what, well, because what I heard was risk level.
Right.
And what are we at risk at on an annual budget? And so kind of presenting those numbers to you or giving you some, some ideas to think about and pick a number.
So, and I think the, and I think the, the point is going to be, right? Like if the program continues, it's a choice we actively make opposed to, we just put this thing on, set it and forget it. Okay. So did you guys have enough?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we're going to do so, we are now thirty, maybe forty-five minutes over. Um, AJ, we don't have a work session next week. Can we roll this? Is there, is there any reason why we can't roll this second item? Or Nancy, now that you're back, can we roll, um, update on recreational temporary housing until next week?
Sure.
Oh, who? They really gave you an easy one the first time in front of council, didn't they?
All right. Thank you all. It's nice to work with you.
Thank you.
And I'm not normally this brutal.
Um, he absolutely is.
Okay, I have.
So then we're going to reschedule item three, um, and then I'm going to go and adjourn the work session so we can, um, make sure that CETA starts up here. We are adjourned.
We can probably, uh,